Good afternoon, welcome to the City Council Meeting of Monday, April 15. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, we will observe a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting is now called to order. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization that you are representing unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and organization, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned in a future agenda. Today is not a meeting with open public comment. And now, will the clerk please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four is our consent agenda, Sections one, Sections two, and Sections three.
All right. Is anyone here to speak on any of the items on consent? Sections one, two, or three? Anyone here for the consent agenda? Seeing no one, City Clerk, please.
Also, is there anyone here from the public that would like to testify on any items, Sections one through three? I'll read item one eight. Reappointing Gregory McGowan, James McGee, and Gregory Newport to the Historic Preservation Commission for terms to expire April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second by Duden. Please call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item one B is setting the hearing date of Monday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four at five thirty P M. to assess the cost for inspections and snow and ice removal of public sidewalks on four properties totaling one thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four winter season, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John Carlson. Please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item one C is setting the Board of Equalization Hearing Date of Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four at three P M. on the College View Maintenance Improvement District, Havlock Maintenance Improvement District, North Twenty-seventh Street Maintenance Improvement District, South Street Maintenance Improvement District, University Place Maintenance Improvement District, and the West O Street Maintenance Improvement District, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments? All right, go ahead, please call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
All right.
Items two A and two B were introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber. Anyone, any comments? Okay, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
All right. Let's move on to public hearing on liquor resolutions.
I'll call items four A and four B together. Item four A and B is application of Wilkinson Development, Inc., doing business as Fat Dogs Lincoln for a Class D liquor license located at eleven oh one West Bond Street and the related manager application of James K. Ryle.
Okay, is anyone here for this application? Please come forward.
James Riwi, one oh seven North Elder Avenue, North Platte, Nebraska, Wilkinson Development.
If you would mind moving, just thank you so much. Now we can hear you. All right, Mr. Riwi, would you like to tell us a little bit about this application?
We are building Wilkinson Development a new truck stop right behind that existing store out there by the airport. That hotel was torn down, Mark purchased that property. We're putting a new truck stop up there and looking to have some liquor in there and apply for the license. I am the manager on the other applications we have throughout the state, so just put my name on this one, too.
All right. Does anyone here have any questions? I did notice that since you opened in two thousand and fifteen, you've had no violations. Thank you. Congrats. All right. Next item.
I'll call items four C and four D together. Items four C and D is application of New Degas LLC doing business as Bodegas Alley for a Class C liquor license located at fourteen eighteen O Street and the related manager application of Jamie L. Shamrock.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, two eight zero four, South Eighty-seventh Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, appearing on behalf of New Degas LLC, which is taking over the Bodegas liquor license and bar on Fourteenth and O. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Changing the name?
No.
Excellent, thank you. Next item, please.
I'll call items four E and four F. Item four E and F is application of S D L LLC doing business as Hampton Inn Airport for a Class I liquor license located at eleven oh five West Bond Street and the related manager application of John E. Clembo.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how is everybody today? Rob Scholl, one four eight eight North Ninety-sixth Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I represent all the Lincoln Hotel Group properties from a sales perspective, so Mr. Clembo couldn't make it today, he had a little rehab, so happy to answer any questions. This is just strictly a Hampton's changed their brand standards and we're just going to have some beers and wine in the pantry. That's all there is to it, pretty simple.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you for coming down.
No, thank you. Y'all have a great day.
All right. In my desire to keep everything moving, I have forgotten to allow for public comments, so I am going to back myself up and ask if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak on any of the items that have already been heard in liquor. Thank you very much for your patience, and I'll try to slow it down. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
I'll call items four G and H together. Item four G and H is application of Zip Line Brewing Company LLC doing business as Zip Line Brewing Company Beer Hall for a Class C liquor license located at fifty-seven forty High Code Drive, Suite B, and the related manager application of Marcus A. Powers.
Is anyone here on this application? Would anyone like to speak on this application, either in favor or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item four I, application of Zip Line Brewing Company LLC doing business as Zip Line Brewing Company Beer Hall for a Class C liquor license located at fifty-seven forty High Code Drive, Suite B, and the related manager application of Marcus A. Powers.
Is anyone here on this application? Would anyone like to speak on this application, either in favor or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item four I, application of Zip Line Brewing Company LLC doing business as Zip Line Brewing Company for an addition of a catering license to their Class L liquor license at twenty-one hundred Magnum Circle, Suite one.
All right, is anyone here for this application? And would anyone from the public like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, move us along.
I'll call item four J, application of Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery doing business as Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately ten feet by ten feet at the Hay Market Farmers Market at Seventh and P Street on May fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four from eight A M. to twelve P M.
All right, is anyone here to speak on this item? And would anyone like to speak in favor or in opposition to this special designated license? Okay, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item four K, application of Homegrown Industries Lincoln doing business as Mellow Mushroom for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately seventy-four feet by three hundred feet at Canopy Street from Articue Street on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four from seven A M. to eleven P M.
All right, is anyone here from Mellow Mushroom today? Okay, I note that this application is in conjunction with three earlier applications of the same date and time, so this would be the entire rail yard for a special designated license. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this license on April twenty-seventh? All right, Madam Clerk, you may move us along.
Item four L is application of S M G Food and Beverage LLC doing business as Pinnacle Bank Arena for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately seven hundred feet by four hundred and forty-eight feet at Pinewood Bowl located at thirty-two oh one South Collington Avenue on May thirteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, eighteenth, June fifth and June fifteenth, July twenty-third and twenty-fourth, August ninth, eleventh, twenty and twenty-first, and September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four from eight A M. to two A M.
All right, is there anyone present to speak on this application? All right, seeing no one, any councils have any comments? Anyone from the public? We'll take the next application.
Item four M is application of Sidecar Cider LLC doing business as Zero Cider for a special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately ten feet by ten feet at the Hay Market Farmers Market at Seventh and P Streets on May fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, June first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth, July sixth, thirteenth, twenty, and twenty-seventh, August third, ten, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first, September seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth, and October fifth and October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four from eight A M. to twelve P M.
Is there anyone to speak on this item? Would anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Madam Clerk, let's move on to voting.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, and you did provide ample opportunity for the public to speak, I'd like to motion, will they approve items four A through four M.
Second.
Second, Carlson. All right.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to public hearing resolutions. Item five A.
Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March sixteenth through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Would anyone like to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing no one, let's move ahead.
Is anyone from the public like to testify on item five A?
I'll call item five B, approving the participating provider agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Nebraska Total Care, Inc., to allow a health clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement of medical lab services provided to eligible participants for a three-year term beginning April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four.
Good afternoon, Pat Lopez, Health Director. This is a new contract that we're having with one of the managed care companies, and it's a way for us to seek reimbursement for some of the services we provide for eligible individuals that will take away from money that we have to use from the city and county budget, so we're really happy about it, and you'll be seeing a few more coming.
All right, thank you, Director Lopez. Does anyone have any questions for the director? Okay, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this resolution? Let's move along.
I'll call item five C and five D together. Item five C and D is approving the cooperation agreement between the city of Lincoln and Pheasants Forever, Inc., for saline wetlands conservation, and related item five D is approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, the Nebraska Games and Parks Commission, and the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District for saline wetlands conservation.
Good afternoon, Maggie Stuckey-Ross, Director of Parks and Recreation. We have two agenda items today related to the saline wetlands conservation partnership. One is an interlocal cooperation agreement with the Lower Platte South N R D in Nebraska Game and Parks. The second is a cooperation agreement with Pheasants Forever. Both agreements have a five-year duration, starting on July first of this year through two thousand and twenty-nine, and both have already been approved by our cooperating agency partners. For those of you who weren't here five years ago, when these items last came before this body, the purpose of the saline wetlands conservation partnership is to protect, restore, and manage this rare and unique eastern saline wetland habitat. It started in two thousand and twenty-three, coming up on twenty-one years of cooperative work. The city is part of this group of state and local agencies that established an implementation plan to address the preservation of the special land and the needs of our community. There is a multi-pronged approach, including emphasis on research, education, outreach, and conservation. The eastern saline wetlands were once estimated to be more than twenty thousand acres, less than four thousand remained, and many of these are degraded. The wetlands form a regionally unique wetlands complex located within the Salt Creek, Little Salt Creek, and Rock Creek drainages in Lancaster and Saunders County. Terms remain consistent with our past agreements, as they have worked incredibly well for all agencies, including Parks and Rec. The interlocal commits the city to employing the partnership coordinator, who is a member of our team, with support from agency partners. The Parks and Rec funding is part of our operating budget, and the cooperation agreement outlines the Pheasants Forever contribution to funding this position. I'm happy to take any questions and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Director Stuckey-Ross. Are there any questions or comments?
This is a good thing.
It's an excellent thing.
We agree.
Yeah, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment in favor or in opposition on this item, on these items? All right, seeing no one come forward, we can move forward.
I'll call item five E is approving the agreement of architectural services between the city and H D R Engineering, Inc., for architectural design and construction oversight of the multimodal transportation center.
All right, good afternoon, Director Elliott.
Good afternoon, Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, five 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 South Tenth, and today, item five E is related to our multimodal transportation center design contract. I'm excited to be before you asking for your approval of this. Currently, H D R subcontractors Olson has been working with us to develop and start working on the multimodal. Ultimately, our goal with the multimodal is a safer, more efficient, and inclusive public transportation center, and this concept has been around for two decades now, and it's something that we've been refining, and part of this design contract is taking concepts that have been shaped over those last twenty years, from multimodal studies, transit development studies, to long-range transportation, taking all of that feedback from the public and community that we have heard to now pull it into an actual design. Right now, our preferred location that we are looking at is just the south surface parking lot for city-county employees between Ninth, Tenth, G, and H. This footprint here is the preliminary footprint that H D R has developed for this perspective, and it ultimately will include outside, we have eighteen bus bays, would it be eighteen plus one if we ever are lucky enough to get an inner-city bus between Lincoln and Omaha? There would be a bay for that as well. It does include a small, two-story building that would include indoor waiting space for our customers, public restrooms, a security location, customer service, and ticket cells, and then on the second floor would be a public meeting space, and all of Startran administrative staff would be there. So it would be a vision where we have this staff during Startran operating hours. This is the preliminary design that was developed by H D R on this. It's been exciting to go out and get some initial feedback from the community on this. One of the best things at our recent public engagement on February twenty-eighth at the F Street Rec Center was two people came up and said, "Do you have a design firm that's coming from New York?" And we were very excited to say, "No, we have a local design team here," and that was very well received by the public, that they were excited that it was from people who live here, people who understand our community, and I think this preliminary design says just that. Now, this is preliminary, and what this contract does is to allow us to get through complete design, hundred percent design, environmental, and community engagement. It also will be construction oversight as well, once we get to that phase of the project. This is just another view of the preliminary, looking west from Tenth Street, just south here from the city-county complex, going around the block. This is from G Street, looking north, so you would see some of the bus bays, looking up at the city-county building. Again, around the block on Ninth and G, looking northeast, just another view of what this area could look like. And then from Ninth, looking east, this would be the opposite side, and you can see the glass area, that would be the indoor waiting space where people could see their buses coming, so they don't have to wait out in the elements, they would be able to have covered waiting space outside, if that's what they would like to do as well. And again, just a different, we would have electronic wave finding, making sure that this is a really inviting community space for our entire community, and making it easy for those who are using the system to know where their buses are, when they're coming, those types of things. So it's all of these different ideas and visions that H D R and their subconsultants, Olson, will be able to pull together and really make this beneficial for our entire community, whether or not you ride public transportation or not. The other part of this, because this is multimodal, we are looking at, working with the planning department on how to connect our pedestrians, trails, access, that type of things. So this design will include connecting what I call the four corners, making sure their pedestrian access is safe and easy to cross the streets of Ninth, Tenth there, but additionally, looking at how does this connect to the entire system, so looking at not only what exists, but also the proposed bikes through the bike plan master study, and how can we make this even more connected and an anchor of downtown in the south Hay Market. So with that, the other part of this contract, as I mentioned, involves community engagement, both now and then through the construction phase, and then environmental studies that is underway right now, and they are assisting us with this, and we do hope that final design will be the end of this year, so that we can get this out to bid for construction in twenty-five and twenty-six. So with that, we are asking council to approve the contract with H D R, and we're excited to get this project moving forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
How much is the contract?
This contract is, oh no, you would think I would have that number off the top of my head. This contract is, sorry, I'm looking at Chris Conley to come up with the exact number, I apologize, I have every other number here, but not this one.
I thought it was three point eight three million.
Sounds right.
It's about.
Thank you, yes. Three million eight hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. We are asking that we do an amendment to reduce this a little, by just over seven thousand dollars, as we were doing a, once through at the very last minute, to make sure our i's were dotted and our t's were crossed, we noticed that there was not an item removed, and it was a community survey, so city staff and all of that have been doing that on our own, so that was removed from the scope of work, and that is the cause for the reduction in that service, so I apologize, we didn't catch that sooner.
All right, saving money is always good.
Well, and, you know, trying to make sure we constantly review things and get multiple i's on it is helpful.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
And I should say, we do have representatives from H D R and Olson here, if you have any questions from them as well, so.
All right, thank you, Director Elliott. Are there any comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition? All right, well, it is a good thing to see this project moving forward. Exciting, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this item? I'll call item five F, approving the Motorola Communication System and Services Agreement between the city of Lincoln Police Department and Motorola Solutions, Inc., to provide Astro twenty-five essential services and system upgrade, communications equipment, and services for the city for a four-year term.
Good afternoon, I'm Todd Bean, I'm the radio system supervisor for the Lincoln Police Department, City of Lincoln. This is a four-year agreement that basically covers ongoing support and a structured upgrade path with the vendor of our eight hundred megahertz trunked radio system.
Okay, does anyone have any comments or questions? You have a very easy afternoon. All right, would anyone from the public like to ask, oh, no, would anyone from the public like to comment either in favor or in opposition?
So with that, we are asking council to approve the contract with HDR, and we're excited to get this project moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
How much is the contract?
This contract is, oh, no, you would think I would have that number off the top of my head. This contract is...
Pack it.
Sorry, I'm looking at Chris Conley to come up with the exact number. I apologize. I have every other number here, but not this one.
I thought it was 3.83 million.
Sounds right.
It's about.
Thank you, yes. We are asking that we do an amendment to reduce this a little, by just over $7,000, as we were doing a, once through at the very last minute, to make sure our i's were dotted and our t's were crossed, we noticed that there was not an item removed, and it was a community survey. So city staff and all of that have been doing that on our own, so that was removed from the scope of work, and that is the cause for the reduction in that service. So I apologize, we didn't catch that sooner.
All right. Saving money is always good.
Well, and, you know, trying to make sure we constantly review things and get multiple i's on it is helpful.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
And I should say, we do have representatives from HDR and Olson here, if you have any questions from them as well, so.
All right. Thank you, Director Elliott. Are there any comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition? All right. Well, it is a good thing to see this project moving forward. Exciting. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this item? I'll call item 5F, approving the Motorola Communication System and Services Agreement between the City of Lincoln Police Department and Motorola Solutions, Inc., to provide Astro-25 essential services and system upgrade communications equipment and services for the city for a four-year term.
I'm Todd Bean. I'm the radio system supervisor for the Lincoln Police Department, City of Lincoln. This is a four-year agreement that basically covers ongoing support and a structured upgrade path with the vendor of our 800 megahertz trunked radio system.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? You have a very easy afternoon. Thank you. All right. Would anyone from the public like to ask, oh, no, would anyone from the public like to comment either in favor or in opposition? Anyone from the public? All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's move to the voting session.
Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from March 16th through March 31st, 2024, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Weber? Let's vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5B is approving the participating provider agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Nebraska Total Care, Inc., to allow health clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement of medical lab services provided to eligible participants for a three-year term beginning April 15th, 2024, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Weber. Any comments? All right. Let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5C is approving the cooperation agreement between the City of Lincoln and Pheasants Forever, Inc., for the saline Wetlands Conservation, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Weber. Any comments? All right.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5E is approving the agreement for architectural, oh, excuse me, back up one here. Item 5D is approving the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, and the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District for saline Wetlands Conservation, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Showb. Any comments? All right, let's vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5E is approving the agreement for architectural services between the City and HDR Engineering, Inc., for architectural design and construction oversight of the multimodal transportation center, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber?
Mr., Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend on item 5E.
Thank you.
After a second, I will...
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second, Carlson.
This is a substitution resolution, this is substitute resolution, which will reflect the changes in the dollar amount that Councilman Duden discussed during his, during the presentation.
All right, thank you. Any comments? That's clear. All right, let's vote on the motion to amend, number one.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Wash, uh, excuse me, Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
And now the main motion.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Item 5F is approving the Motorola Communication System and Services Agreement between the City, Lincoln Police Department, and Motorola Solutions, Inc., to provide Astro-25 essential services and system upgrade communications equipment and services for the city for a four-year term, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Duden. Any comments? All right, let's vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. Let's move on to Public Hearing Ordinance's second reading.
I'll call item 6A, approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Parks and Recreation Department and Parks and Recreation Foundation for the lease of space by Lincoln Parks and Recreation Foundation at 3131 O Street, Suite 300, from May 1st, 2024, through April 30th of 2034.
Welcome back, Director Stuckey-Ross.
Good afternoon, again, Maggie Stuckey-Ross, Parks and Recreation.
Randy Gordon, Lincoln Parks Foundation, 3131 O Street. The Lincoln Parks and Recreation Department and Parks and Recreation Foundation have long enjoyed a successful relationship. We have co-leased space in buildings dating all the way back to the A Street location, and we currently are occupying space at 3131 O Street, right in the heart of Parks and Recreation, which I can't understate or overstate how valuable that is for us.
So the current lease that we have with the Parks Foundation expires at the end of the month. The proposed lease agreement before you today is similar to the current agreement with a few updates. First, it reflects the area that the foundation is using at Woods Park Place, roughly 460 square feet. It provides for a $100 a month lease payment. With the current lease, the foundation had prepaid its rent, if you will, in the form of a contribution to capital improvements at our old offices at 27th and A. It also harmonizes language to reflect current practices at our current location. We're fortunate to have such a strong and well-respected partner with the Lincoln Parks Foundation, and we look forward to future successes together, including the also-important and exciting South Haymarket Park. So we're happy to take any questions you might have.
All right. Are there any questions?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next item, please.
Is anyone from the public like to testify?
Yes.
On item 6A?
I have a strong need for efficiency today. My apologies.
Item 6B, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 8.20.030, definitions to revise the definitions of food establishment and vendor to add mobile food establishments and vendors' trucks. By amending Section 10.02.470, vendor's truck to update the definition to include motor vehicles, cabin trailers, and products or services intended for sale which are carried in or provided for retail sale. By amending Section 10.02.480, vend or vending to update the definition to include products or services for sale from a vendor's truck. By amending Section 10.46.110, vending rules to add that a person shall not vend or allow vending from any lot or alley within a residentially-zoned district, and that a person shall not allow a vendor's truck to vend between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM within a residential zone district.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Brock Hannish. I'm the Division Manager of Environmental Public Health at Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. The proposed revisions within Lincoln Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Sanitation, specifically 8.2, Lincoln Food Code, is primarily focused at harmonization of the definitions and some cleanup as it relates to proposed revisions in Lincoln Municipal Code Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. So Title 10 chapters, the proposed changes or amendments are primarily focusing on definitions and also the vending rules, locations and timeframes in which vending can occur, primarily focusing on emphasis on the residentially-zoned districts to the general public. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions?
So as I read this, in a residential area, as long as operator was between 10, or excuse me, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, they could operate their business then?
Yeah, from the, that's correct. And when you dig in there further, it primarily focuses on, you cannot do it within the front yard, side yard, alley, so you can do it in a driveway or potentially on a street. So if a vendor wanted to come to a, let's say, some kind of celebration, colleges, you know, or graduation to vend in the driveway of particular residence, they could park there, and as long as they're within that timeframe, they could vend.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brock.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item, either in support or in opposition? Madam Clerk, we may, we may move ahead.
I'll call item 6C, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24004, clearing approximately .09 acres of city-owned property, generally located at 10th and N Streets as surplus.
Good afternoon, Peter Hind, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I thought I would just show you exactly what we're surplusing and explain why we're doing it, to make sure there's no questions or concern. On the map that's coming up, O Street is to the north. You'll see a building on the south side here that doesn't exist anymore, it's a large hole, and we've identified the red portion that we are surplusing here. Right now, in that piece of ground are the LES transformers that are below grade, and we're working with the developer to move those to the west side of the site, so that the site can be developed more cleanly and have better access for goods and services into the back of that. So this just kind of helps us clean, clean that up. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions?
Thanks very much.
Is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move ahead.
I'll call items 6D through 6I together. Item 6D is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24002, application of the City of Lincoln to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the priority growth area maps, to change from Tier 3 and Tier 1 Priority B to Tier 1 Priority A, property generally located near the intersection of North 70th Street and Interstate 80. The related Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24005, declaring approximately 314.51 acres of the city-owned property generally located at the intersection of North 70th Street and Interstate 80 surplus. The related Annexation 24002, application of the city to annex approximately 448 acres, more or less, in the adjacent public right-of-way generally located east and west North 70th Street and North Interstate 80. And the Change of Zone 24004, application of the City of Lincoln to change the zone from AG Agriculture District to P Public, on property generally located between Highway 77 and North 84th Street from Interstate 80 to Bluff Road. And the related Street and Alley Vacation 24004, request of the City of Lincoln to vacate the remnant right-of-way for McKelvey Road east of North 70th Street, adjacent to property generally located at 1/4 mile north of intersection of North 70th Street and Interstate 80. And the related Real Property Exchange Agreement between the City of Lincoln and the State of Nebraska for property generally located along the north side of Adams Street between 102nd and 112th Streets and city-owned property located generally northeast of the intersection of North 70th Street and Interstate 80.
Good afternoon, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council Chair, Council Members. My name is John Carlson, 555 South 10th Street. I'm part of a team, along with Tim C. and Liz and David Carey, who have been working with the, on the city interstate site parcel. As the clerk just mentioned, we have six related actions before council today, so I'm going to go just do one presentation on all the items, and happy to take questions on any of, on any of those items. Let me start by, before we get to the actual items, let me just do a small bit of background just so that the viewing public, as a reminder to what got us to where we are here today on these items. So as, as we know, the state is decommissioning their current corrections facility near 14th and Nebraska Parkway, and they're building a new facility. Late, last summer, the state announced the purchase of a site near 102nd and Adams Street with the intent to locate the facility there. As a reminder, the state doesn't need permission to purchase land or to construct facilities where they, where they desire. However, there's a belief that we share that the Adams site is in a growth area in the comprehensive plan that's shown for residential development. It's not a good location for a corrections facility, an institutional type of facility in a, in a neighborhood growth area. So the city has been discussing a land exchange with a parcel north of the interstate and east of our current solid waste operations, about 70th Street. As I'll show, I believe that, we believe the interstate site is better suited for a corrections kind of institutional facility. There's more commercial or industrial in the area, there's larger public institutions also in the area. It's got easy interstate access and better roadways there. Again, the council had a copy, there was an MOU between the city and the state last August, that we've been working with city officials and state officials then to get us to this point, where we'd have the land exchange that required these further actions by city staff and council. Those actions require these public hearings at Planning Commission and at the council. And as I'll show, the five, five of the six items needed to go through Planning Commission, and they went through Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago on March 27th for their review and approval. So let's start by just talking a little bit about the location of the two parcels. As we can see, we've got the state-owned parcel, which is north of the city limits, and the city-owned parcel, I'm sorry, east of the city limits, and the city-owned parcel, which is to the north of the city limits right now. If I zoom in a little bit, you can see those a little bit closer. They're basically the same size, just a little bit more than 300 acres, although they're different shapes. They're essentially acreage for acreage in terms of a swap. You can see here again how tight the Adams site is to the growth area in the Stevens Creek Basin that's shown in the comp plan for new neighborhoods, a new area, where, as you can see on the north, and I'll zoom in on these a little bit more too, along the interstate, you've got a much more institutional type setting that we think would work better. So zooming in on the Adams site, as I said previously, it's not a particularly good location for a corrections facility. You can see the existing residential housing and the development that's in the area. Mahoney Park and Golf Course, not too far away from there. This is Stevens Creek Basin, where we'll see and plan to see substantial residential growth to the east as the city moves into that area. The Prairie Pines Nature Preserve borders there, so there are some riparian areas and some environmental areas that we'd want to be sensitive to with any development in this area. And also, the traffic access is poor. These are basically gravel county roads that surround that area. In contrast, we look at the interstate site, and basically, it's north of I-80, and it's east of 70th Street, which is a paved road. You can see that it's, it's more suitable for an institutional use like a corrections facility. To its north is the Bundy Power Station, LES Power Station. To the west of it is basically future land for solid waste, but you can see the active area along 56th Street where the landfill is. Across the interstate to the south is undeveloped area, but across the interstate and slightly to the west is more of a commercial area, the camping world, there's a trucking service in there, you can see those types of uses. And then the city would retain the strip that's basically immediately east of the interstate parcel site. So again, surrounded in there, traffic access is good, there's current public uses that surround it. You've got the I-80 exit of 56th Street, and then 70th Street is a paved road that also has a, an interstate overchain that goes straight over the interstate. So traffic access is good in that area. So what's needed to exchange the interstate site, again, these are the items on the agenda. I know the council's familiar with these type of actions, but again, for the viewing public, I'm just going to go through them and explain just a little bit of what they are. First one is the comp plan amendment to the future land use map. So the comprehensive plan shows where the city intends to grow, and it shows maps of those growth areas. So this parcel that would be included in the north to show that it's a growth area for the city. We'd have surplus property, which would be a declaration that various city departments have looked at this parcel and don't have a future need for it, so the city can declare it surplus and allow it to transfer ownership. The annexation, which would then bring the parcel into the city limits so it can access city services. The change of zone, which would change it from its current agricultural zoning to P public use to indicate that it's a public institution. The McKelvey Road vacation, which is essentially a local service road, and I'll show you that in a map in just a second, so that we would vacate that road, since it would no longer need public access, there's nowhere to go on that road. Those five went to Planning Commission for public hearing, as I said, a couple of weeks ago. Planning Commission recommendation, as you can see in your packet, was approval of those five. The land exchange agreement does not go to Planning Commission. There's some individual elements on that that I'll highlight later on in the presentation here, too, that talks about the onsite modifications that need to happen to some of the infrastructure there, and the infrastructure extensions that need to happen in order to serve the property. So there's the list of them that we just talked about, and I'll just go through them, go through each one of them here to show how we're addressing those items that are on your agenda. So there's the map from your, from your packet, that basically shows how we're amending the 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise that priority growth map to include that interstate area and an annexation area that's a little bit of a panhandle there to the west. You can see that area. But I will point out, though, too, and this went, went through Planning Commission, while comprehensive plan to revise that priority growth map to include that interstate area and an annexation area that's a little bit of a panhandle there to the west. You can see that area. But I will point out though too, and this went through planning commission, while this was out here, the planning department in their review saw that they've actually got this small odd shaped size that's on the east of what's essentially the square panhandle part and the intersection of Fifty-Sixth and I-80 which is also shown in the growth maps that they did not intend to have in the 2050 growth maps. So while they're here and they have an application in front of you, they're asking to amend those areas back out, amend the area in that's intended for the interstate site. The surplus property, again, just involves the roughly square, it's not quite square, that corner has a big LES transformer on it, so that's the part that would stay. But that's surplus property. It will remain in public use even if the state uses it. And as I'll show you a little bit later, we'll be retaining a few easements for some LES cooling lines and some overhead power lines that cut through the property. Annexation, again, you're familiar with annexations, we would annex the site to bring it into the city limits. And we need to have a pathway. So essentially, as you look at this slide right here, the sort of cloudy tan areas are outside the city limits. The clear aerial is the current city limits, so we need the parcel to be contiguous. It needs to touch the current city limits. The way that we'd propose to do that is to bring it in like this. So we'd pick up the interstate, we'd pick up Seventieth Street, both of which are contiguous to the parcel, and then we'd pick up that panhandle piece which only goes across city land. And so we picked this area specifically because it doesn't impact other private property. Sometimes people want to be annexed, sometimes they don't want to be annexed. This application only affects the city controlled parcels as it comes through and then touches the contiguous city. That's the official map that you've got in your, the other one was my PowerPoint mockup. That's the official map that you have in your packet that shows that panhandle. Change of zone, as I mentioned before, we take it from AG agricultural to P public. This isn't technically necessary because the state's not bound by local zoning, but we think it's good process to show when uses, what they are and have the zoning reflect the actual uses. In that same spirit, and again, the planning department, when they were putting their staff report together, you can see the parcel in that gray purple color, but actually, all of the city land out here is still zoned AG agricultural even though it's been in public use for decades. So in that same vein, while we're out here doing this, we'd like to rezone not only this parcel P for public, but all of the city parcels out there to show that those are in public use and are being used for public facilities. Here's the McKelvey Road, you can see that it's circled down there. It's really a local road that went in to serve the lagoon that used to be on this site. We vacate that so that it's not public right of way anymore. The state may or may not use it for their internal needs to the site, but it won't have access, public wouldn't be able to drive onto the property. And then we've got some comments about the existing infrastructure that are spelled out in the land exchange to accommodate the exchange, that exchange. And I'll go through these two. We've got removal lagoon, removal of the east turbine, retain the easements that I talked about before, and then put up some landfill fencing. So this site's been used for the past forty-plus years as a farm field that included an in-ground liquid bio-solid system that was installed with an EPA grant in the nineteen eighties. One of the things that's been interesting about working on this project is to get a glimpse into actually how forward-thinking Lincoln really has been on a lot of these different projects. So as early as the eighties, Lincoln was looking for alternative ways to handle, not to be too indelicate, but their waste products that happened with your wastewater treatment system. So that liquid bio solids, which is a nice word for sludge, is a byproduct of the treatment at the wastewater facility, especially forty years ago, and many municipalities were simply burying that in their landfill. Lincoln got an EPA grant to actually run a test system here where they would have this in-ground lagoon and then they actually had a below service injection system that would use that as fertilizer for the farm field, rented out the fields and those fields were farmed. And that has actually overperformed in terms of a grant. I think the initial grant period was fifteen, twenty years and it's been in service for, well, it was in service for about forty years. Since that time, Lincoln continues to try and be cutting edge and look forward on our technology. We now use different technology at the wastewater plant. We use what are called de-watering machines, which are essentially centrifuges, which take the water completely out of the product and you're left with a dry powder that also gets sold then either as a bag product for fertilizer or as a truck product for fertilizer. It's far better than liquid solids which are difficult to transport and inefficient to use. So the lagoon system actually was decommissioned, allowed to dry out, cleaned out, and it's actually been pulled out of there. This is an older Google Earth picture, but the lagoon's actually not even there anymore. The east turbine, if you've driven up and down the interstate near time here in Lincoln, you've noticed the two big LES turbines that are on this site. You've got the one east of Seventieth Street and the one west of Seventieth Street. Both turbines are decades old, they were installed over twenty years ago as demonstration projects. At their peak output together, they produced one point three megawatts, which wasn't a lot, but the point of doing demonstration projects is to show that this is a viable technology. You know, even twenty-five years ago, you could generate electricity, we could build these, the people should be interested in that. And it's worked, it's worked way successfully. Today LES purchases over three hundred megawatts of power and they purchase it for wind farms all over the country. They're part of the southwest power pool, so they're purchasing wind from Wyoming, purchasing wind from Oklahoma, and a significant amount of their portfolio is generated through wind farms. LES had agreements with the turbines, those agreements actually would run out at the end of this year anyways, and the agreements spell out that they're in charge of decommissioning the turbines. Since they're out there, they're actually going to take a look at both turbines, not sure that one of them's even functioning anymore. They're going to see if there's an economy of scale to take them both down at the same time when they have the cranes and the equipment out there at the same time. And then as I said before, we're going to retain some easements on this property. These are not the exact lines, this is a demonstration line, but we've got the lines that are in the packet and the map. But essentially, again, another cutting-edge project that Lincoln wastewater's been involved in. So we have the Terry Bundy, the LES Bundy Power Station that's north of this site and the northeast water treatment statement which is south of the site, south from the interstate. Can't see it on the map, but it's south from there. So LES takes gray water, so water that's been cleaned and processed from the wastewater plant that's ready to be discharged. They actually, we actually take that and we pipe it to the Bundy Power Station. It's a power station that generates heat, they need water to cool their power station. They use that gray water to cool off the power station. Then they take the water that's become hot from cooling off the towers, they put it in their lagoon, you can see on the map. They let it cool back down and when it's back to an appropriate discharge temperature, they call northeast and they tell them they're ready to send the water back. They send the water back, northeast checks it out, and then it's discharged. So we're making use of a wastewater over and over again, this gray water, whereas LES, if they did not have this technology, they either have to use fresh water or they'd have to use well water. So it's a nice project. So that will remain in place. So the state will have an easement that shows that that can remain in place and if it needs to be maintained or repaired, we have access to that too. Some landfill fencing. Again, you can see that, you can see where the active area of the landfill is, you can see the sort of growth area. So the active area closer to Fifty-Sixth Street, you can see to the north, it's maybe a little bit hard to see, but that north kind of diagonal piece, that's where the composting and the various actions are happening. The active area of the landfill to the south and that part to the east along Fifty-Sixth Street, there is fencing and there is trees planted in that area. And so what we'd propose to do as part of this agreement is go ahead and put trees along Seventieth Street, even though we're not really close to that area, but trees take time to grow. So we'd agree to plant the trees along Seventieth Street, put some fencing in now, so in the decades to come, when solid waste starts to move into that area, we've got the trees growing up and we've got a good screening that's built up in that area. And lastly, we've got infrastructure extensions. So in order to serve this area, we need to get water and we need to get wastewater out there and there need to be some road improvements that are taken out to the site. And the state and the city are cost-sharing the extension of those city facilities to get them out to the site, to these mains. Under the proposed agreement, the state is responsible to pay for all the infrastructure costs and the city is going to make a cash contribution and not to exceed. They're still designing the project, they're still designing the ultimate costs of all those, but we know the city contribution will be capped and that the city contribution won't be due until October first of twenty twenty-nine. So not, a little five and a half years from now. And the reason to put that timeframe in there is because, since we weren't planning on having an institutional facility in this area, we don't have this program in the CIP. We have been setting aside money to make those extensions. And so with this proposal, the state will put in the infrastructure which the city ultimately will own and operate and it can support future development in that area. Then we'll be able to have five years to program it into the CIP when we eventually make our contribution on the backend. The only arterial road improvements that were indicated in their traffic study are the turn lanes that they're going to need to make into the site off from Seventieth Street. LES will be extending electric service as part of their normal operations. They have the capital reserves and they're planning and able to extend that to an institutional use. And the state will work with Black Hills or other private providers for any other utility needs that they have. So recap, we've got a land exchange, essentially an even trade of three hundred acres for three hundred acres, and we think it makes the sites match up better for the proposed future uses. The interstate site, better for, it's more commercially oriented, it's better for the state corrections institutional type of facility. The Adams site then gets preserved for urban residential growth as shown in the city-county comprehensive plan. So the six items in front of you, the comp plan amendment to the map, surplus property, the annexation to bring it in, the change of zone to properly reflect the use that will be there, McKelvey Road which is no longer going to have public access, and the land exchange and the site improvements that go with it. Those are the items that are in front of you today and I can answer questions now. We can wait and see if anybody has any comments so we can come back up and answer questions, wherever you'd prefer.
Let's first, excuse me. Let's first answer questions from council members and then we'll open it up to the Does any council person have a question or a comment for John?
I do.
Okay.
So when the swap happens, does the administration have any plans for the newly acquired land over on Adams Street?
Right. So the ultimate use, no. The immediate plans would be that currently it's got a farmhouse on it and it's a farm field, so it would continue to be farmed. Solid Waste has other properties that are continuing to be farmed too, so it would continue to be farmed in the very short term. I mean, our intention is that the comp plan shows it to be neighborhoods and it should be developed into neighborhoods in Stevens Creek. We don't develop neighborhoods as a city, so I suspect what would happen is much like LES or LPS, that we probably would identify other properties that could have a potential city use and then probably swap that land again. So if there was a developer in the future that wanted to turn that into neighborhoods, we might say, well, okay, let's look at these other parcels where maybe we need a fire station or a police station or some other parks facility. We'd probably do another swap then in the future. And that would all come to council again as a land swap.
Can you talk a little bit about the financial cost to the city with this project? Because the state's forcing this on us. So can you talk a little bit about what the cost to the city is because of the state's decision?
So essentially, the most significant cost would be the infrastructure partnership and the cost share. Again, that's really, it's more of a time value, more of a cash flow than it is an ultimate cost. These are infrastructure improvements that the city again will own and the city typically works with developers to put in. It's not unusual for us to cost-share in it. I think ultimately it helps facilitate getting the institutional use in the best possible spot instead of the Adams spot. So I think the combination of the cost share and the combination of having the time to program it in is where we see kind of the win-win for both parties.
And if the council does not approve these actions, what would the outcome be? Like what would be next then?
I don't want to speak for them, but the state has purchased the property at one hundred and second and Adams and they have expressed their intent to build the prison there, so I can't speak for them, but I'm assuming if this wasn't an option that they'd proceed forward with their East Lincoln installation.
Thank you, John. We'll take questions or comments from the public and then we may call you back.
Sure.
So is anyone here present, like to comment either in favor or in opposition to this item? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, Tulley one zero zero two zero White High Road. I'm not in favor in this, so yeah, I would say I oppose because first, I don't see any like reason state up there that why we have to move. So maybe there's a reason, I just don't see it up there yet. So we need to know why, the reason to move from the current location to building to a new location and because it's going to cost money, right? Cost the city, cost the state. Why are we putting that type of money into locking people up, but not into like building more affordable housing? Or even like last week, like or the week before, we talked about the bus station, the new model, and when we talk about putting art there for people to look and enjoy, we say we don't have the budget for that. But at the same time, we have the budget for building more facility to lock people up. Meanwhile, we already have a facility to do that, so why have to put more money into building that? Second, I just don't get the logic of putting a prison near the interstate because what if people get out? And that just make it easier for them to run away, right? It's next to an interstate, run faster. So that's just my question and yeah, I do not favor this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Taylor Vacy. My address is ninety-seven hundred North Eighty-fourth Street. You could see my house on the map in this last presentation. I know you guys are busy, but I hope that, and I'm sorry, I'm not a speaker. I am a teacher, but I am not a public speaker. I'm asking for a few minutes of your time today. I reached out to the governor via certified mail and I didn't hear back, so I'm asking for your help and your understanding. A little background, I grew up listening to my mom and my grandparents' stories about their time living on the farm, raising chickens, raising cattle. My great-grandparents sold produce, they sold their chickens. When they got too old to maintain their farm, they moved into Lincoln and he continued to farm on his hands and knees. And that showed me the perseverance of a farmer. That gave me my initial drive to own land someday so that I could grow my own, so that I could provide for my family. My husband Cory and I are teachers in Lincoln. He teaches a fifth grade classroom in a Title I school and I teach students who are blind and visually impaired. We don't make large salaries, but we started a small business, we save everything that we can, and we're happy with where we're at. We lived in Lincoln throughout our childhood, young adult years. We got married, purchased a home in Ninety-fourth and Leighton, so right where the other proposed location was. We brought our baby home there and then COVID began. Our oldest son has a sensory processing disorder and had been suffering from major anxiety at the time, he didn't want to go to school. In our neighborhood, there were frequent fireworks being shot off, daily noise from other houses that were impacting him and he didn't have the space to get his energy out. We began to really think about what we wanted in life, started pinching our pennies to make our dream a reality. We searched for months, bless our realtor. It was a journey. We found our perfect home. We wanted, we knew we wanted to have an acreage with privacy, land to have freedom and space to raise our boys to love nature. We finally found our dream land. The home wasn't modern, but Cory and I were willing to put in the work to make it what we wanted. We just passed two and a half years of living in our forever home, the one that our oldest dreams of buying from us when he's grown and the one that Cory and I dream of being able to sit on the front porch when we're retired and enjoy our little piece of heaven. Cory and I spend our days, so sorry, pouring our blood, sweat and tears into this land with endless projects. We see the growth of this property and future possibilities every day. We have a list of improvements on our refrigerator that we want and we try to restore this space to protect the wildlife that live here. We built a garden in the back and then added on more garden in the front. We started a small business, a cottage bakery, and then we began working towards opening a summer program for individuals who are blind and visually impaired to experience gardening, growing their own food, harvesting and being able to prepare food to prepare them for their future. Our oldest runs free in the property, tracking animals, planning his next adventure and playing sports in the backyard. He now loves attending school in Lincoln and his anxiety is no longer hindering his life since we moved to the country. Our youngest just turned five, he can only remember this homestead. He is able to independently harvest tomatoes, cucumbers, beans and peppers, and he loves caring for our chickens. This last summer, we had the immense pleasure of watching two baby fawn grow alongside their mom. The variety of wildlife we've seen on this land is extensive. We took the steps necessary to certify our home as a wildlife habitat and teach our boys every day to respect the land we are fortunate enough to have. The memories we've made in the last two years were supposed to be the beginning of a lifetime. All these plans and dreams changed when I received a message from an old neighbor and friend. She sent me a map showing the new proposed location for the state penitentiary and my heart stopped when I saw our driveway on the map. Everything we've sacrificed, saved and worked so hard to accomplish is now devastated by this location. Our view from our bedroom windows will never, no longer be open land and sky. Our front porch will not be filled with views of deer in peace, but instead lights, towers and listening to sounds that we worked so hard to leave for our children's sake. The announcement of the prison across the street from our home has been a gut wrench. The wildlife that draws here and entertains our days thrive in that land and it will now be a home to some of the state's most dangerous. I see the anxiety and fear returning to our son already. We've been faced with the thought of moving to protect their well-being, but we feel trapped. The value of the property that we put our hard-earned money into and have worked tirelessly to enhance for future resale when we're too old, to maintain the property the way it deserves is now a question. Our taxes and property value increased yet again this year and we were told that there was no paperwork to show viability in this land swap, so there was nothing that we could do. Who's going to want to purchase a land and a house across from a new prison? I needed to come here and speak to you today because as a mother and a wife, I needed to provide my family with those dreams we made together.
Ms. Vacy?
Yes.
Time?
Yes.
If you could wrap up.
Yep. I'm requesting that you rethink the proposed changes to this agricultural land that provides habitats and land swap with the state, allowing another penitentiary to be built in Arrowtown where children and families want to feel safe and free. I thank you for your time and attention. You're welcome to reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Vasey?
I think, I just, I want to respond to that because I agree. This is a really hard situation because the state is the one that's forcing this onto our city, and I'm sorry.
Anyone else wanting to comment? On any D through I. Councilman Duden?
Just wondering, John, could you show us the map? So we can see this where this house is?
So, John Carlson, so do you like it? Again, I don't know exactly where the map is, but if it's across, if it's on the Eighty-Fourth Street, it'd be on the east side of Eighty-Fourth Street. Couple things that I guess I would point out here is that the city is retaining the non-purple gray portion, which is a quarter-mile buffer. So that's 1,400 feet from Eighty-Fourth Street to the edge of the state land. The corrections facility would be oriented towards Seventieth Street because that's their access. So I don't know where their building placement would be, but my assumption is that the building placement would be near Seventieth Street then to Eighty-Fourth Street. So that would be pulled back. And then the only other thing is there are some institutional uses out there, including the power plant right now. Totally understand what she's saying, and my hope would be that with, between the buffer that exists in those riparian areas and in the quarter-mile that gets kept by this city would provide an appropriate buffer between any use.
Can you show us, can someone point out exactly where her driveway is?
Is it appropriate for, please?
Could you, ma'am?
If you don't mind.
On the big TV, does that work?
This is our property right here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Shob.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson, during your presentation, you discussed planting some trees and building a windbreak. Would you draw it with your finger? Well, I don't know if you can. Where, on Eighty-Fourth Street, right? Is that where that was planned?
It's actually on Seventieth Street, and this is a good slide for that. You can see the green squares and the circled areas. That's the part to buffer from the correction site. You can see there's actually an existing tree line that's already, well, you'd have to zoom in, but there's an existing tree line that is, sorry to walk away from the line.
You're.
Windrows that are planted here already. Now, again, I understand what she's saying.
Yes.
If you have a vista, the vista is the vista. The trees may not block the entire vista.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just have one more question as a follow-up. I thank you for pointing out the Eighty-Fourth Street line where there's some trees. At the west edge of the parcel the city's going to retain, there's another row of, it looks like a drainage area, and there's a row of trees as well. Is, does that line, that the boundary line between what would be state and what would be retained for city, does it run right down that drainage?
It's really close. I'm looking at Tim, because Tim helped draw up some of the documents. Yeah, this is challenging.
Tim C., Assistant City Attorney. Do you have a mouse? You don't have a mouse on here? All right. So western boundary of the parcel is here, obviously, of the site that's being exchanged. And then this is a, this is actually like the east half of the northeast quarter. So as you, sections out here are divided into quarters, and this is the south half of this larger section.
Mm-hmm.
So this, if you think about this, this is a, this area right here is a quarter-mile cross.
Okay.
And then, yes, it runs, that property line runs roughly down that drainage way, and then all the way to the interstate.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you, John. Thank you, Tim C. All right. I think we can move on to the next section. Madam Clerk.
Section seven is ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions. Item 7A is adopting the supplements of the Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2023 and December 2023 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Carlson. Any comments? Madam Clerk will vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7B is approving a contract between the City of Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation to operate and regulate a Saturday public market in the Haymarket area from May 4th, 2024, through October 12th of 2024, and May 3rd, 2025, through October 11th of 2025, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Schob.
Oh, wow.
Any comment?
Farmer's Market. Yay.
It's a good thing. We can vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7C is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23004, application of RC Kruger Development Company, Inc. to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map on approximately 23.75 acres by changing from agriculture to commercial on generally located at 10955, 11105, 11111, and 11125 and 11205 South 14th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments? All right, let's vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7D is Annexation 23003, application of RC Kruger Development Company, Inc. to annex approximately 32.29 acres, more or less, on property generally located at 10955, 11105, 11111, and 11125 and 11205, South 14th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments? Proceed with the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
All right, next item.
Item 7E, appro, right?
Yes.
Okay, 7E, approving the conditional change of zone and annexation agreement for the Satilla Express Business Park between the city, Ross Holdings LLC, Perry Family Real Estate LLC, Yarnham Ventures LLC, Merlin Albert Venice, and Eugene Dwayne Venice, co-trustees of the Venice Land and Investments Trust, and Eugene D. Venice, trustee of the Eugene D. Venice Trust and the Sally K. Venice Trust, for the property generally located at 10955, 11105, 11111, and 11125, and 11205, South 14th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments or questions? We may vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7F is Change of Zone 23015, application of RC Kruger Development Company, Inc. to change the zone from AG Agriculture District to H4 General Commercial District on approximately 23.75 acres on property generally located at 10955, 111, excuse me, 11105, 11111, 11125, and 11205, South 14th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? We may vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7G is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23003, application of FOG Limited Partnership to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map on approximately 73.5 acres from agriculture, AG stream corridor, industrial and environmental resources to industrial and environmental resources on their property generally located at South 14th Street and Satilla Road, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? All right, we may vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7H, Annexation 23002, application of FOG Limited Partnership and annexation of approximately 55.26 acres, more or less, for the property generally located at South 14th Street and Satilla Road, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? We may vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7I is approving the conditional zoning and annexation agreement for Jamaica North Business Park between the city and FOG Limited Partnership for the property generally located at the east side of South 14th Street, approximately one-half mile north of Satilla Road, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? I'd like to take a moment. I wasn't here last week, but I took the liberty of watching the council session, and I want to thank, I did, yeah, why not? And I want to thank the members of the FOG partnership for the conservation easement and for the efforts they've done to make certain that Wilderness Park is protected. Thank you very much. Any other comments or discussion? We may vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7J is Change of Zone 23014, application of FOG Limited Partnership to change the zone from AG Agriculture District and I-1 Industrial to I-3 Employment Center District generally located at South 14th Street and Satilla Road, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? We may vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 7K is Use Permit 23002, application of FOG Limited Partnership to allow for use permit to allow for development of 29 lots and five outlots on approximately 55.26 acres with associated waivers to the block length, sanitary sewer manhole depth, intersection design standards, and stormwater quantity detention on property generally located at South 14th Street and Satilla Road, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Let's proceed to vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.